Welcome, everybody, to our Thursday, June 9th Regular Commission Meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence since our city attorney is joining us on Zoom. So if you will please rise and have a moment of silence for our neighbors in Texas and Buffalo. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Quick announcement. We will be, after the meeting, celebrating Rebecca's birthday.
Yay!
So happy birthday. Anybody that wants to stick around for, I don't know what dessert she picked, but there's something sweet afterwards. Anybody that wants to stick around is more than welcome to join us. So now we'll move on to presentations. We have the John Dogleone Scholarship Award, and I am going to turn that over to our school liaison, Commissioner Gow.
Thank you, Mayor. It is truly an exciting night tonight. The City of Dunedin offers a scholarship every year to a senior at Dunedin High School, and it's always in partnership with the Dunedin Youth Guild. So what I'd like to do is invite Amanda Bowman and Susie Gizi up. Amanda is the president of Dunedin Youth Guild, and Susie is the all-powerful person over scholarships.
That's right. That's what we call her.
Over everything, I think it is, isn't it?
She does everything.
She's the puppet master.
Let me tell you what. So, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. Just a couple of things. Let me just tell you a little bit about the Dunedin Youth Guild. To begin with, my name is Amanda Bowman. I have the honor of being the president of the Youth Guild, and it is an amazing organization. With our organization, we are able to give so much back to the community and to the youth of Dunedin. And our big thing is that we want our youth to go out and do great things and then come home. That's a big thing for us. We want them to come back. And what an amazing city, and that we have the opportunity to partner with you. We are so blessed to be able to partner with all of you because we know for a fact that you love your residents, that you love us. And when you give back to the kids, it really does prove that they are our future, and they're going to do great things, especially when they have the support of the Youth Guild and the support of the entire city of Dunedin. And we are so, are you going to cry? Stop it.
We all do this. That's why we have tissues on the dais for that very reason.
So, we are incredibly grateful for everything that you've done to help us continue this scholarship. We're very fortunate that we get to, see now, I'm going to go. We're very fortunate that we have the opportunity to meet these amazing kids and just watch how their lives unfold. And we're so excited to see what their future holds, and they're going to do great things. So I'm going to just bring Susie up for a moment. She's going to give you a little bit of history about our scholarships and how it works. And then I would like to say a couple of things to Allison. I know you're going to as well, so we can do it together, or we can do it, me, you, whatever you want.
Go, girl.
The Dunedin Youth Guild Scholarships for Seniors.
The Dunedin Youth Guild Scholarships for Seniors. We raise money through our annual fashion show every year, and we are fortunate enough to have an anonymous donor who provided money, and one of our members provided a donation in honor of her father as well. And with all that, we were able to award up to $50,000 this year to our seniors. And that also goes to the continuing scholarships from years past. So, I'm done.
Well, so you can see them to her as well. Let's invite Allison up.
Absolutely. Come on down, Allison.
So Allison, we wanted to say, as far as the Youth Guild is concerned, that we are incredibly, incredibly pleased that you are part of this amazing organization, and we want you to know that you have our support. Not only do you have your family's support, and that's big, but you have our support as far as the Dunedin Youth Guild. You have this incredible city who loves you and will be cheerleading for you. We will be cheerleading. You have an amazing group of cheerleaders, and we want you to go far, and we know you're going to change this world, and we're so excited for you. So I'm going to hug you.
Really? And I have to follow that? Do what I can. You know, for a number of years, the city's actually been putting forth scholarships. And up until 2006, it was known by the quite appealing name as City Scholarship. But in 2006, the city wisely approved a resolution naming the scholarship the John Dogleone Government Services Scholarship, after the former mayor, John Dogleone. Mayor Dogleone devoted his professional life to public service through a distinguished career in the United States military, a long and significant career in Dunedin's municipal government, and through service on numerous boards and committees in the area. Given Mayor Dogleone's life of service, it's appropriate the scholarship be awarded to a high school senior that reflects the same value of service to their community. There were three applicants for this year's scholarship, and all three were worthy of recognition. There was one application, however, that stood out, and that was senior Allison Smith. Allison's application packet was 18 pages long. With no disrespect to Allison, and in the interest of time, I did leave out Allison the early years. That being said, when you hear what Allison has accomplished, you will agree that she lives up to the namesake of the scholarship, Mayor John Dogleone. And here's just a small list of how Allison has kept busy. Random Acts of Flowers, Paul's Project, Homeless Empowerment Project, Women in the Word Ministry, Habitat for Humanity, Florida's Sheriff's Youth Ranch, Toys for Tots, Northwood Community Church Workdays, Dunedin Causeway Beach Cleanups through Warrior One Yoga, Live Oaks Bible Church, Rotary of Dunedin, Waterside, got to clarify that, Ready for Life Foster Care, Samaritan's Purse Operation Christmas Child. And in addition, Allison was involved in several on-campus clubs and committees, such as Student Government Association, the Interact Club, NASA Marine Science Club, Chess Club, Jazz Club, National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta National Math Honor Society, the DHS Tennis Team, and the Youth Leadership Panas Class of 2022, the best class ever. And anybody who's been through leadership appreciates that. And that's just to name a few. She was also this year's drum major for the Dunedin High School Marching Band, leading them to straight superiors in the Florida Bandmasters Association, MPA, the Music Performance Assessment. And lastly, my God, how does she sleep? Allison is Dunedin High School's 22 graduating class salutatorian with a GPA of 4.5. With a desire to stay local, Allison plans on attending St. Pete College and majoring in neurology. Oh, I'm trying to get through this. Now, Mayor, members of the Commission, City Manager, City Clerk, friends and family, please join me in recognizing this year's recipient of the John Dogleone Government Services Scholarship, Allison Smith. Somebody has to direct me now. What am I doing?
You're going to go down and give her that.
I'm going to go down.
Okay, I need the tissue. You've got to get one with the parents. Come on, the parents got to come up. Get one with the parents.
And the aunt, too.
Yep. Come on up. Everybody come up, family.
Everybody come up.
Do we want the connection involved?
Yeah.
Yes, come on, everybody down.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. I didn't want to back out.
Yeah. Well, that was pretty impressive. You guys don't have to stick around. We'd love you to stay, but don't feel obligated. So now we're going to go into our next presentation. Oh, and Commissioner and Youth Guild folks, just thank you for all that you do, you know, towards our kids. I know it gets you in the gut, and that's why you make a great school liaison. So thank you for that, and thank you for representing our former mayor, John Dogleone, right there on the picture, in such a great manner. Appreciate that. All right, now we're going to go to another exciting presentation, which is our LGBTQ+ Month proclamation. We're going to celebrate Pride. And I am going to turn that over to Commissioner Frainy, who has been representing the city on the Pride Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I need Gregory and Pam and the whole committee to come forward. Don't be shy, guys. I know you're never shy in any other time.
Come on down, guys.
It's not a shy group.
Yeah, it's not a shy group.
No.
Awesome.
Yeah, what happens in Toronto stays in Toronto. We know you guys aren't shy.
Except for All Hail Mo.
All hail Mo!
Okay. Guess it's a play on words, right? Okay, LGBTQ+ Pride Month 2022. Whereas all are welcome in the City of Dunedin to live, work, play, and retire, every family deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. Whereas a number of LGBTQ+ historical events and people of all races have contributed to the history of equality for all people, and whereas each year the month of June honors the 1969 Stonewall riots in Manhattan and the struggle for basic civil rights for the LGBTQ+ community to remind all cultures within our wider community of the important roles LGBTQ+ people have taken in shaping the social, historical, legal, and political worlds we live in today. And whereas Pride Month affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about LGBTQ+ history, first seek to understand, right? This is what it's all about. And to honor the many LGBTQ+ American leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas the City of Dunedin has a strong history of honoring inclusivity, we, I'm not saying that right, help me, guys.
Inclusivity.
Thank you, our vocabulary person.
Yep.
Okay. We value the contributions the LGBTQ+ citizens bring to the city and pride ourselves on diversity. And whereas the LGBTQ+ community has made great strides forward, but equality, inclusion, and acceptance have not yet been fully achieved, we must practice these values and teach them to generations, to future generations. Now, therefore, I, Maureen Mo Frainy, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the City of Dunedin on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim June 2022 to be LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Dunedin and call upon our community to respect, honor, and celebrate our diverse community and to continue building a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance of the LGBTQ+ community.
Now, had I known that last presentation was going to go the way it was, I would have asked to be first. I'm a lot smoother. My name is Gregory Brady, and I've lived in Dunedin since I was going into the fifth grade. And I was asked by someone why we still need to have a Pride event. You know, it's Dunedin. Why do we have to have a Pride event? And I can say that that fifth grader never knew that he would be standing here like he is today. Because to have respect and to be treated fairly and equally is a huge mountain that we're climbing, and we're not there yet. There is still discrimination. There is still murder. There is still suicide. There are still problems that plague people of all differences. And Dunedin is unique. We're not just welcoming to the LGBTQ+, we're welcoming to all people. And that's who we are as a city. And I think for us to celebrate this aspect of it is important, empowering, and you see the community coming together. The majority of our sponsors this year, I want to recognize, as mostly small businesses. We don't have huge corporate partners with deep pockets. We have small business owners that are coming out of a COVID and dug deep and gave us some money to make sure that we can celebrate. We want to have fun during Pride, but we also want to educate people, empower people, bring awareness. And this committee behind me is only a portion of the committee that is sat to make this possible. So we have everything from our parade this year, which of course, very fitting to Dunedin is a golf cart parade, that goes to a baseball game, that ends up playing in the pool, and then will culminate to a powerful gala where some speakers will describe some challenges and some hurdles and some accomplishments, which is really great. But as a gay man with my husband, who's somewhere behind me, that will tell me I'm never going again. Walter and I have been together for 26 years, and we've been embraced completely by this community. We've never felt hate. We've never felt discrimination. But that's an anomaly, but not in this community. So I thank you guys all. Staff has always been wonderful to us. The Commission has always embraced us. And as the Chair of the Chamber, I feel that this partnership with the city is getting stronger and stronger each year, and I am so happy to be a part of that. And our Executive Director, Pam Pravitz, echoes that comment with me, that without those partnerships with all of the different organizations, we couldn't accomplish what we do, and we couldn't be the community that we are. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. And if anybody else would like to speak, they can go first.
Please set it off.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere.
And this means a lot to all of us, and it's in our Pride guide. And I do want to invite the public to come out to all the events, except the pool party, it is sold out.
Well, and I thought that Commissioner Frainy might want to...
And so I just had an enjoyable time in Toronto with Mo and Julie and Deborah and Jennifer, and I will not say a word.
Good. Keep it that way.
So I would love to hear some comments from Commissioner Frainy.
Well, no, I mean, actually, you bring up Toronto, but none of us knew, of course, that they were, it was the Blue Jays' Pride Weekend, and it was such a great, it was a great, it was such a great kickoff. And, boy, they know how to do it. They know how to embrace. And I think the only one competitive to that is, of course, Dunedin. But they really, it was kind of nice to see that. But no, I've been very proud to be part of the committee on behalf of the Commission, and I think there's a lot of pretty neat things planned for the week, and it's a full week, you know? I mean, like, so, and we are striving for all of us to make sure there's representation at every event. I should be at every event. But people have worked hard, and really, I think it really is about awareness, you know, really helping people to fully understand, you know? I don't think that people always understand unless it happens to you. And then it's first seek to understand and understand what other people are going through and what that means. But I'm very proud of Dunedin because, you know, they really do support diversity and embrace everyone, and I think that's what our community is about. Actually, I have to say, when we talk about understanding, I was with a friend of mine who's a teenager, is now identifying as "they." And she was sharing, you know, some of the things that, you know, a lot of us still are trying to grapple and understand. And she said something to me about when I was in Toronto, did they have the new flag? And I showed her, and she said, well, that's not actually the new flag. So then she looked it up, and she showed me this flag that somebody obviously got who has the official new flag. And I know there's, Jeff, and there's...
Jeff's wife.
Fantastic. So I just think, again, but within that flag is a lot of things to understand, right? It's all different individuals that want to be fully part of our community and not be shamed, be fully part in contributing. So I'm proud to be the liaison. I'm proud of our community, and it gets emotional for me because it's personal. So, thank you.
And myself, you know, I was asked what the colors represent in the flag, and I said, you know, the most eloquent statement, you're going to have to look that up. No, when, as coming up, it was just the rainbow flag. But as you said, as we go, we're embracing more and more. And one thing I do want to speak to is, we are adding an element to speak to our elder community. Because one of the powerful films, Jen Silent, will be shown at the Hale Center Tuesday night, and the message is, you know, picture that you are 85 years old, and you grew up in a community that was absolutely non-accepting and sort of tolerant at times. But now you have to go back into a living facility where those same peers are, and the bullying starts all over again. And it's very sad, and they have to, in a sense, go back in the closet. So we want to recognize that as part of what we're doing, as well as students that struggle and just people that, in their normal workday, and, you know, we are your brothers, your sisters, your attorneys, your teachers. We are in every aspect of life because, you know, I can say for myself, you know, born this way, proud of it, and love you guys for respecting it. Thanks, and have a good night.
Don't go anywhere yet. I'm sure others have some things to say, maybe.
I'm excited, but I'm talked out. I've been through the stress.
Okay.
But no, but this is, it's, can't be excited that we're doing this, and it's nice that Largo had their flag raising, and St. Pete had their flag raising, and we had our flag raising, and Clearwater had their flag raising, and it's, and Tampa's had theirs. So it's, it's nice to see the progress, but we can't, we can't also forget that there's, we're not there yet. And so it's, we march on.
And I think we're excited for this day. It's about acceptance and not just tolerance. It's about accepting everyone and, you know, being open to, to everyone's being part of this community.
I think inclusivity is really a wonderful touch word because we are all different. We all have, you know, differences. We, but we all, you know, we have to come together as a community respecting everyone's differences, and that's what makes Dunedin strong. I think it always has. It's always been a community that I think reaches out, that is accepting, that is understanding. Seek to understand, I thought that was lovely, Mo. And, you know, even when I got here, I have to tell you, and I've been here 43 years, but I saw how much the LGBTQ+ what you all did for our downtown. And I... And I continue to say, you know, you all have, you just really did it. You put it, you got in there and you really opened the doors. So I thank each one of you. And of course, we continue to make progress, but it's always that we need to continue. We need to continue to open people's minds. We need to continue to support ourselves as the community we are. But thank you all.
Commissioner Dunga?
Well, Gregory.
We're not talking about parking, John.
I know. And all of the other things that I've been through with you. But you got a great backing back there, so, so you got, someone's got your back all the time and so do we. I'll just say Dunedin's strong and Dunedin wonderful. And I don't know how it happened and I don't know why it's always happened, but it's been like that, supported by groups, various groups within the city. And I appreciate your comments about how you feel about Dunedin and that makes me feel real good. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything, Jennifer?
Sure, absolutely. First of all, I can't, I'm so impressed by how far you've come in the work that all of you have done to bring this event. I mean, boy, you're professionals, especially you. Anyway. You're professionals. And just so you know, and a lot of people don't know this, but we're actually on June 16th having a in-service citywide in-service day. All the city facilities will be closed and we're going to be talking about inclusiveness in the workforce as well. And I think it really goes well with Pride Week. So, and I just want to say that I, that I'm incredibly proud to be the city manager of a city that embraces every segment of our society the way that we do. And I consider myself very fortunate to be here and to be working alongside all of you. Thank you.
So, I'm also incredibly proud. Just last year, we raised the pride flag, you know, for the first time. And, and we said that.
Twice.
Yeah, yeah, twice. Hey, that's only in Dunedin, right? But, you know, what was also very, made us, I think all of us very prideful, if you will, is that we sat at our budget meeting and said, you know, St. Pete can't be the only group that has pride events. I mean, why we never did it before, I don't know. And I mean, we did a couple of times, you know, in Highland Park and stuff, but I'm really proud that we put our money where our mouth is, our action where our mouth is. And I'm very proud to have been able to be a part of watching our first openly gay commissioner come out with her story.
Me too.
Me too.
So, we will all.
Julie, because, or Mayor.
Julie's fine.
You were the one, you know, Julie and I went to school together. And Julie came to me and said just that, St. Pete's having their pride, we need to have our own. Do you want to do it?
Yep.
And at the chamber, there was a resounding unanimous vote of the board of the chamber to undertake this.
And we want to thank the chamber for, for being our partner. I can tell you, I mean, we've got great parks and recreation people that do events all the time, but there's no way they could have accomplished what you all have accomplished as a group. You know, it would have been one day of something, street festival or something. So what, you know, the, the varied events, the varied age ranges, the various levels of, of craziness to all the different ones, you know, that took a lot of creative people. So before it even all begins, thank you for that. And we do pride our own way. We don't have to be St. Pete and we're not expecting to be St. Pete.
You got your parade. It is a golf cart parade.
And I am perfectly hap, I said, we're having a damn parade. And a golf cart parade is absolutely perfect for who we are.
Yes.
And so, thank you for all the work. Greg, thanks, thanks for, you know.
The turn of Japan also.
Yes, ma'am.
Our big thing is Dunedin is unique, our pride is unique.
It is.
We're not doing the same stuff as anybody else.
Right. And, and we're very proud of everything we're going to do. Thank you.
And if they want to find out whatever they want to see for Pride and what events are out there, it's dunedinpride.com and they can find out. I just got the storm.
You shot yourself with, with.
Thank you all very much. And thank you for this.
Yeah, we're going to do a group picture, but before that, I'm going to, I'm going to do the last word because one thing that, I, I think that it's important that you said, you know, because, because when we, when we did the pride flag Tuesday and, and as we've shown it a little bit for the city, we, we still have some people that chime in and, and they're fairly hateful comments. So we have a ways to go because what you said is what it's about. It's about the children now and supporting them and validating them so that they can feel free of the shame and be who they are. So you said it and to me, that's why we have to keep doing it, so.
We have to be leaders.
We do.
And that's leadership.
And boy, we have some good ones up there.
And other than that, oh hell, Mo.
Go do your group picture. Yay. Go on down there, you're part of the committee.
Did I say, oh hell?
Oh, hell, Mo. Oh, I know. Oh, you, you did? Did you get them for all of us?
Thank you.
I care if I can, it's probably out of order.
I don't care.
I know, last year, you had mentioned why, why we weren't in the St. Pete parade. And so I just wanted to know if there was any thought that this year.
Uh, no, we, we didn't go down that road. We had talked about it with the New World Celts, they wanted to do it. And that was Ray before he moved. So we have our own parade now. I mean, I think we could at some point, but I, I think we got to focus on our own event now, now that we have one, you know? They can come up and be in our parade. Just saying.
If they have a golf.
They've got to be in a golf cart.
We'll get them a golf cart. And I, I do think in the future, you know, it would be nice to invite some of our North County electeds to do that kind of thing, be, be on a golf cart. Also, Jennifer, the, you know, our sign that we did during last year, our Dunedin in this together, where we, we welcome all races, religions, countries of origin, sexual orientation, genders and abilities, we stand with you, you are safe here. I would really like to see a very large version of that in our lobby.
Okay.
You can color coordinate it. You know, it doesn't have to be this color. I just think that makes a huge statement in our new city hall for who we are.
And we see it throughout downtown.
Yeah, that, it's in all our restaurants and stuff, so I would like to see that in our lobby so that people see that when they come in.
In, in new city hall? I mean, we can do it here too, but we don't have much room over there.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, in our new city hall. I just, I think it, every time I see this in one of our businesses, I get, I feel so thankful for it and, and people still have it up. It was something that we originally adopted that the brewery had up. And, you know, I, I want to keep it going. And I, and I think it, if the businesses can have it in their windows, we should have something in our lobby that states our, that's our mission.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Pride cards. Okay, we'll move on to citizen input. Anybody wishing to come forward and talk with us on any item that's not already on the agenda, please feel free to do so.
I think there's some thinking going on here.
We, we have some Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scout.
Girls' Scouts are from the BSA.
Gotcha.
Cool, welcome.
Welcome. Your government patch or something?
Yeah.
Come on up.
I'm here for a merit badge.
Come on up. We'll help you with the merit badge. We won't buy it, I swear to God. Come on, just come on, all three, all three of you come up. Come on.
There's a wall between you.
That keeps everybody sick.
Come on, I swear.
They came last year for this, I mean, the pride meeting.
Did they? I don't remember that. I don't remember that. That's good though.
It impacted me and they were here.
Welcome.
Hello.
So you're trying to earn your government badge or?
Uh, I believe it's communications.
Communications.
Or maybe it's citizenship and something, I don't know.
Citizenship.
Yeah.
Very good. Did, did you have any questions for us?
What are your names?
Uh, this is Gabriella. And I'm Susanna. We're from the Troop 10 BSA troop.
Nice, welcome.
I'm good.
Welcome. Do you guys go to school in this area?
Uh, I got a Carwise, which is in Down Palm Harbor.
Yep.
And I don't know where you go to school. Uh, Palm Harbor Middle.
My son went to Palm Harbor Middle. Well, very good.
You know, if I'd known you were coming, I was a Girl Scout and I've got all my badges.
Of course you do.
And I still have it with all my little merit badges.
I was a Brownie. I never made it to Girl Scouts.
So, so the next time you come, you're going to have to let me know and I will drag it out of the mothballs just to show you that I was indeed a Girl Scout.
Well, very good. Thank you for coming. You've got a pretty short meeting tonight. We just got a couple of hearings that you can watch, boring stuff. So we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you.
George is offended, but.
Sorry. Do you have questions? You can ask him.
Okay, he's talking.
Hi, I'm the Assistant Scout Manager.
Hi.
Um, we have heard rumen that there is a potential archery range coming to Dunedin, which would actually help out with scouts because we do have an archery merit badge. And archery is also a Olympic sport that the girls are interested in. So can they get some more information on that?
I don't know anything about an archery thing, but.
Never miss a moment.
I know, we have archery, we have an archery camp, don't we?
The Kiwanis is, is very involved in trying to do something, but Jennifer, I know, is.
We do, I think at the, at the Community Center, Highland Park, there is a archery session camp type of a thing. We are, uh, there's a park in, in the northern part of the city called Sterling Park. It used to be a par three golf course. That's, that's where you take three shots at the hole. And we are working on community input right now on that park. Archery could be an element. It could not. So we're, we're looking at what community input that we get. We, we need to put, you know, as far as elements, that's, that's kind of the recreational facets in a park. You know, we would really rely upon the community to tell us what it is that they would like to see in the park. But we would certainly put that on the slide and talk to them about that.
Great.
That's great.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to any item not already on the agenda? Okay. We'll come to our action items. We have the first reading of ordinance 22-17, First Amendment to Development Agreement with the Gateway. We're going to go ahead and have the staff presentation first before we do any reading of title and all of that. So Nikki, you're, you're good for now.
No problem, I'm here whenever you're ready.
Alrighty. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hold on one second, Justin, you don't need to put that, that photo up yet. Thank you.
The power you have, magic.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners George Kenny on behalf of the Community Development Department. I'm going to actually turn this over to Joey to kind of talk about where we're at. This is a First Amendment to the Gateway Development Agreement. There's a couple of, I think, fairly modest changes, but Joey will go through those with you. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them at the end.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, good evening, Joseph Dipaska, again on behalf of Community Development. So, so yes, we have our first reading of ordinance 2217, which is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. And as you, you know, we had a previous development agreement that was obviously executed, followed by the design review approval for the Gateway project. And the developer has been working on bringing that project to fruition through infrastructure review and ultimately through permitting. But in that process, needed to make some amendments and made a request, as you know, to the city manager to negotiate an amendment, being the First Amendment here tonight, to the existing development agreement. And you've given, you've, you've of course granted that authorization. Those negotiations have completed and we have a draft amendment for your consideration. And as George mentioned, really the changes are pretty minor in nature and I'll go over those briefly. The amendment itself really does a handful of things. It, it pulls in two properties that were not part of the original proposal. Remember, you may recall, there were six parcels involved in this project, so they've added two additional parcels. They total about .39 acres. So that's the first change is to bring those into the envelope of the project. The second is to increase the apartments. The original, the original approval and proposal was for 81 apartments in the apartment building. They're, based upon the additional acreage that they're adding to the project, they're able to increase that. So they like to increase that from 81 to 90. The rest of the elements, as far as the number of hotel rooms and square footages of non-residential will remain the same. So it's an increase of nine apartments. They are going to be doing a relocation as part of an off-site improvement plan of a stormwater pipe that is located on the property. It was known when, when the exchange of property took place last year, or, yeah, I think it was early 2021. And, and so that's being included as part of the off-site improvements. The parkland impact fees as a result of adding additional units have been recalculated and that is, of course, has to be adjusted for the additional living units. And then the timeframe, because obviously we're, we're sitting here today with an approval for, for a request to amend it, they, they need to get some extension to the time for implementation of the project. And so those are the changes being proposed. The changes, as I just explained, and the ordinance was presented on May 11th to the local planning agency, and they did recommend to this, to the City Commission unanimously approval. And of course, staff is also recommending approval of the ordinance and certainly will answer any questions that the commission may have.
Isn't there something else that they're adding? Did you say that and I missed it? The dog park?
So the, 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 that's part of the parkland impact fee element is they are adding some, in addition to the, the, the swimming pool and recreation area in the apartment building, they are proposing to add a dog park, which will be calculated into the parkland impact fee sheet. And so they're going to be looking for credit for that private recreation area.
Okay, and we'll see that at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, questions for our staff or Jennifer, Vice Mayor, anything?
Jennifer, I did ask you something. It was on the $39,000. Well, and what was, refresh my memory.
Okay, so, so the question that you had asked me was what the difference is between the park impact fee for 81 units and 90 units? And it's about $38,000 is the difference.
Thirty-eight thousand, okay. Yeah, that, I had a question on that. And I think that's really about all my questions.
Okay, anything?
No.
No?
I had one, because I didn't want Joe not to speak tonight. Joe, I, at the LPA, I think you explained like how the additional land and how your parking is going to be now and also the way that the trash pickup will be somehow and how it'll, like, it's going to help kind of the whole, could you explain that? Do you mind? I thought it actually was like a really important improvement to the whole design.
It is.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Kokalakis, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. It's funny, every time I get so frustrated about just this entire process, then I come to these meetings early and, and have such a great experience. You know, the last time, I think there was a couple who committed their house to the National Historic, well, the Historic Register. And then you got, anyway. So just when I'm about to get old, you know, you come and you, you really.
We do that on purpose.
I know, I know. It renews your faith in, in this, in this city and everything that we're trying to accomplish. But to answer your question and to kind of clarify some of the things that Joey said, we did during the, I guess pandemic, purchase the soggy bottom and barbecue parcel immediately to the east of the property. That additional, a little bit less than half an acre, gave us an entitlement to additional units. I already had a development agreement in place. I didn't want to amend it or go through any process that would delay this project. So I didn't want to increase the building size or the height or anything like that, but I thought it was a good purchase for the overall process and to integrate it into the site plan. What, uh, the Commissioner is discussing is that with that addition, we were able to, the initial site plan had, uh, the garbage trucks pulling in off Main Street, emptying the, the dumpsters, and then backing out onto Main Street and leaving. This enabled us to pull in, and now it's since an alley, uh, and, and then between Soggy Bottom and the hotel, load up the dumpster, or unload the dumpster, and then pull out onto Skinner and make a right and go about their business. So it makes a much more efficient, um, back-of-house, uh, site plan. Um, we're not, we're improving the Soggy Bottom parking lot. We're not modifying or changing it. Um, we're not doing anything to the Soggy Bottom building, that building, except, you know, maybe just cosmetic improvements. But that's staying. Um, and with that additional land, we were entitled to technically an additional, I think, 12 units, based on the, the surface area. I didn't want, like I said, change the building, but I was able to take a three-bedroom and convert it to a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. Uh, we were able to kind of shift things around and add units, which obviously helps the math. And in the time like now, when pricing is crazy and everything is, you know, escalated significantly, um, it made a lot of sense. So that's what we did. We moved forward with that. I directed the architect to do that. We completed the drawings to do that. And then, um, then I was, when I found out we had to go through this process. Uh, the dollars for the parkland impact fee, um, changed a little bit, but frankly, that's really just money out of, uh, my pocket. Because we are paying more for the Jernigan tract than the fee that would have been generated from the parkland dedication. Um, when we figured all that out, uh, part of the agreement was that any surplus would go towards the improvements of Milwaukee. Anything in excess would come out of the developer's pocket. Now I'm adding nine more units. I'm paying a higher fee. There's parkland dedication fee. There's less of a credit to go towards Milwaukee. This agreement or this amendment is changing that slightly, and it's saying now anything left over, which is the very slim chance, is going to go towards the cost of relocating a city 24-inch stormwater line that's on my property. Joey's correct. That line was shown on the drawings, but there's no easement there, and now it's in the way of the project. So I will move the city water line. I offered to Joey just to cap it, and he didn't appreciate that. But I will move it into the city, uh, property, off my property, at my cost. Or whatever's, again, left from the Jernigan tract. Um, once the improvements on the Jernigan tract are complete, which is the, the ADA walk down and, you know, some site work, that land will be dedicated back to the city as a park.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's good. I, I just, I actually, I love the, the part, because I think it's a little thing, but it's a big thing. The whole route that the garbage truck will take now. To back up on the main, I mean, when you know it's already going to be a lot of, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's significant. So that's good that you were able to do that.
And then the dog park that the mayor, uh, asked about, essentially, we, we had a piece of green that was always on the initial site plan, um, on the north side of the apartments. And as these plans were developed, we thought it was going to be actually much lower elevation. As the plans were developed and we completed our surveys and our topographics, um, we realized that it's actually at a, uh, close to grade and would make a nice, you know, place for the residents, um, and the hotel guests to, you know, bring their dogs and pets and let them run around and, and do whatever dogs do in grass. That's it.
Don't go anywhere, because somebody might have a question. Any questions?
I was going to ask if you could leave him right where he's standing, so he doesn't walk all the way back and come back over here. For all of us, we, I think we're, we're comfortable with the, with the following question, but if you wouldn't mind for anybody listening, would you just comment about the traffic and about the parking and that, that you're providing? And again, we, we all feel comfortable. I believe we all feel comfortable. I know, I do, I discuss that.
Another lesson learned, or another change from the Artisan, is that on the Artisan, we have the open-to-the-public lot on the lower level and the lot for residents on the upper level on grade, they come off Douglas. Uh, we realize that it's probably more effective, uh, especially for the, the, the tenants, um, and the public, to have the lot that's on grade that includes all the land, you know, on Skinner behind the apartments and all the parking underneath the apartments to be open to the public. Um, the parking for the hotel guests and the residents of the apartments will be the below-grade parking that you'll go down a ramp on the north side of the apartment building. Um, and, and that will be secure parking with a gate again. So the residents and the hotel guests, they would have card key or key-card access to go down to the lower level for the parking. Um, even with the additional nine units, I think we still have, um, about, and I don't recall exactly, but I think about between 35 and 40 extra spaces above what's required by code for both the hotel and the apartments. So all the surface area and under-apartment area will be kind of just a regular parking lot for, uh, the retail and the restaurants.
And traffic.
Oh, and traffic, we did it, we did our traffic study, um, which I don't know if, I mean, our traffic study was completed a month or so ago. Um, I don't, I don't know if we transmitted it yet, because we haven't submitted the plans yet. Um, uh, and, you know, and at least our consultant, um, believes that there's no, or minimal impact to traffic. Nothing needs to change as far as, you know, deceleration lanes and things like that. Uh, from, uh, Joey's response, I believe the city is looking to retain its own consultant to review our consultant's comments and hopefully agree.
Anything else, John?
No, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
With that alleyway now, is that where your deliveries will be made as well?
All the hotel, the linen drop-offs, the deliveries and all that sort of stuff for the hotel will be, yeah, on that side. That's where, on the lower level of the hotel, uh, is where the laundry is and whatever else is there. And, and then the upper level is all the service.
I just want to make sure we're not getting deliveries on the street.
Yeah.
That's, again, one of those lessons learned.
Yes, yeah.
But we're not going to be doing that up at Gateway, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and when will the project start?
Well, um, I mean, right now, uh, you know, we kind of were discussing it, uh, as far as a timeline. It's a 24-month, maybe 25-month completion. Uh, we, we'll be ready to submit, you know, the day after this gets approved. Um, and figure probably, you know, at least a couple cycles.
Go-arounds, yeah.
A couple go-arounds.
A couple months.
So I would say September, October. Um, you know, banks have gotten a lot squirrelier than they were, uh, with these monthly interest rate increases, uh, because it is affecting the math and their, their analysis, you know, is pretty much based on debt coverage ratios more than anything else. So, um, yeah, there's, there's a little bit tweaking on, on that end of it, which makes things a little scary. But then again, you know, you have a meeting like this and you see what, what, how special this place is and. But it's, it's, uh, at this point, that's the plan.
Mayor, if I may, for the record, at the second reading, we're going to be bringing you a resolution. And the resolution is a six-month extension of the site plan, of the design review. I'm, I'm permitted to extend it administratively for six months, but we're going to get another six-month extension. Um, and I, I just need your fingerprints on that, since it exceeds my authority.
Okay.
I, I do have one more.
Yeah, hang on just a second. Delivery, oh, and we did, uh.
Aye.
We got a, um, comment on e-comment about, uh, concern for adding 90 new apartments and can, can our infrastructure and traffic and water support all of that? We've, we've actually, and just confirm what I'm saying, we've already been through all of that as far as concurrency and you're working on the traffic. Um, there was, uh, an auto sales and service place there and offices there. I mean, there were, there were uses on that property that were relatively intense. Um, that caused actually more traffic than apartments would. Um, but all of that's been looked at. We have our water situation. I can't remember what you told me at one time, Jennifer, but it was something like we could add. We could triple.
Yeah, twice as much at least.
Yeah.
Twice as much.
Twice to triple our population and still have enough water capacity.
We have capacity.
So, and we're also doing the, um, we've pushed up, don't forget, the Ster, uh, the.
Skinner.
Skinner. That's in their 24 budget, which starts June 23, and it's likely, and then they're already in the design phase. Um, I just want to make sure with that, and I know Jorge's not here, he's on vacation, but I want to make sure everybody, you, you guys, Jorge, everybody is looking at what they're looking at for that air, that piece of it. I'm not sure they, they, FDOT, since they're doing the design, I don't know if they know. I'm sure they know about your project, but they need to know, and they need to know about the alleyway. They need to know about those changes. So that when they're designing the turning lane and all of that, because that's going to be, I, I don't know the right word, odd. It's going to be odd coming off of that hill at Bass, you know, and, and narrowing and then left-turning and there's a lot of potential for problems. So I want to just make sure that everybody's on top of making sure it's designed and thought through very carefully.
So, so Mayor, I, we've been working with FDOT in regards to the impact of the Gateway construction.
Okay.
On St. Paul Harbor.
And I knew you would, but I just wanted to make sure I said it again. Because I know that we don't have our own traffic person at this point. I mean, we have a consultant, but.
And if I may, that, that, that improvement, the Skinner, is why we initially, we have no, no curb cuts onto Milwaukee, onto Skinner from the project. Um, now that we add it's Soggy Bottom, we're keeping that curb cut.
Right.
But that's far enough to the east that it won't impact where the road chokes down.
Right. Um, I just want to make sure it all, everybody's looking at all of those things, especially with the Soggy Bottom piece. Um, because, I mean, everybody goes in there and wants to get to the parking lot that currently is, and you can't do it anymore. But I can only imagine that people are going to do that, want to do that, so. Anyway, um, so we're good on all the concurrency things, which has nothing to do with the Development Agreement, except that we, we got an e-comment, so I wanted to make sure that we addressed her questions.
First one this year or so.
I know. No, I'm happy to see it. Um, okay, you had another question?
Um, actually, I just wanted to point out with the Jernigan tract, I mean, I had to refresh my memory, you know, because, and I just wanted to say again, that is a wonderful, it's going to be a parklet. And, and that's free, open space, you know, places for people in a very urban setting. Plus, you saved the gorgeous Banyan tree. That is a historic specimen, and it's just beautiful. And, um, I was really impressed with that. I think the parklet concept is so important to our community. I mean, we have big parks, those are very important too. But when you're talking about a downtown, when you have these parklet green spaces, it's important for everyone. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to the Development Agreement, please feel free to do so. Seeing her hearing none, okay, come back to the commission. Um, Nikki, would you please read ordinance 22-17 by title only?
Absolutely, Mayor. Ordinance 22-17, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to Development Agreement between the City of Dunedin and Gateway Dunedin LLC, repealing any conflicting ordinances or parts thereof and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of ordinance 22-17 on first reading by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Franny, thank you. Um, any final comments?
I think I just made it about the Banyan tree.
Very good.
So, yeah, I'll make a couple comments, because I won't be here for the second reading.
Okay.
That's, the next meeting is when I'll be gone. No, I'll just say, uh, you know, from my perspective, and obviously, it's not fully approved till the second reading. But again, the, the question I get mostly is, you know, when's it going to start? When's it going to start? People, I think, um.
Yeah, that's what I get too.
I think people, like, there's people that actually want to, you know, stay there. And, uh, and they, so they're real interested.
They want special events there, too.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I mean, to me, again, it's a, it's a great project. I, I believe it's a really good project. I think it fits the, you know, the vision of what the city saw, um, for the size of the building. It's the right place, you know, versus downtown. It's the, it's the right place. Um, it'll, uh, I, I think, um, um, I, I, I think it's going to add a lot, and obviously, it's going to kick off this end of town. And I think that, you know, all the, all the, the big things about parking and traffic, we're, we're looking into, we're being very methodical and careful with. But, um, again, um, Joe and Anna do quality projects, and I have no reason to think this isn't going to be another one of them. And actually, I think the, the change has actually enhanced, um, some things, so.
Yeah.
Um, even though it adds some density, it actually is enhancing other parts that are going to be actually better for traffic. And, uh, so I, I, I'm certainly in favor of it at this point, and you guys will finalize it next time, depending on what you see. But, uh, I think it's a good project.
Okay. Commissioner?
Thank you, Joe. I think this project has been thoroughly reviewed. A great job on, by staff and, and you working with the staff. I know there's some issues you had to get through, and I think we've accomplished that, and I think we've all been waiting for this to happen. And, uh, and I'm pleased that we know, uh, who's going to be doing this, so, thank you.
Commissioner?
Uh, no real comments, Mayor. Just, it's been a long process, and each time we get a little closer, more excited we all get, so.
Thank you.
And then Joe's excited.
Yeah, you know, want to, want to see it get off the ground. It's been, we've owned, we had owned the property in 2004, '05, something like that. Um, so, yeah, definitely want to see it, especially for the draw to the east end of downtown and to get that, um, the feeling out there, so businesses can say, yes, we can be on the east end and be successful and, and the revitalization, um, and have a few years of our CRA before it comes to an end with that completed. Um, so excited about that. And, um, you'll be happy to know, Joe, that I think we're going to, when we look at our code rewrite, we'll be looking at how many times we have to have a Development Agreement read. Because I think we see, especially for small chain, I mean, we can't break our own code. It says what it says, but I think we'll all agree that we can do it once and, because it's Development Agreement, it's not review, design review. Um, so you, you've brought out something that we see we need to change. So, sorry you had to be the guinea pig on it. Anyway, thank you very much. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Torga.
Aye.
Commissioner Gao.
Aye.
Commissioner Franny.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes.
Aye.
Mayor Brzezinski.
Aye, that motion passes unanimously. A second reading will be held on June 23rd. Thank you, Joe. Um, all right, now we have the first reading of ordinance 22-18, which is.
Before we do that, I mean, could, could I just, I, I meant to say it, but thank you to staff and thank you to Jennifer for their work on the negotiations.
Yeah. Yeah, I meant to say it too, and it, sorry.
But we do appreciate it. We know that it's been very, very complex.
Okay, now we have the first reading of ordinance 22-18, repealing Chapter 82 in its entirety and creating Chapter 82 Transport Surface Vehicles. We're not going to do the reading yet, Nikki, in case there are any changes. So we will, who's doing the presentation on this one?
Mayor, I'm going to ask Nikki to give us the background, because this came out of the Ordnance Review Committee.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Mayor. Um, so this was a, um, what I'll call a, a holdover from the first round of ORC changes. The City Commission directed that these changes be made, um, in its prior workshops. You may recall, there were about four, um, directions that the City Commit, that the City Commission made in directing us to complete the, um, ORC ordinances that required some additional review. And this was one of them, particularly in part for how the statutes treat transit network companies, such as Uber and Lyft. Um, so we reviewed for that purpose only. In terms of the, um, background with regard to the policy reasons for the ordinances or why it was presented in this format, um, that was, um, part of the prior ORC process that occurred from October 1, 2018, to December 11, 2019. It is reflected in the minutes that have been previously sent to the City Commission. However, um, you know, I don't have the background on that. But it is being brought before you pursuant to your prior direction, which also included an attachment of the same ordinance. So it's brought before you in the same form. Um, my understanding is that staff has had an opportunity at this point to review it, um, from their perspective. So if Jennifer or anyone else has anything to add, um, I'm certainly, um, happy to turn it over to them. But, um, this is one of the, there are two others remaining that we are vetting, but this is one of the, one of the final ORC ordinances from that 2019 cycle. cycle.
Okay, questions?
I do, I actually have a real question.
Oh, I always think they're fake.
Nikki, well, most of, most of the time they are. I was a little, I asked Jennifer about it, and we couldn't quite figure out, it says "motor vehicle" means a vehicle that is motorized or self-propelled by power other than muscular power by animals. The term "motor vehicle" does not include traction engines, road rollers, bicycles, mopeds, or motorcycles. And I didn't quite understand why motorcycles would be exempted. I mean, it's self-propelled, it's motorized, so I, I really didn't, I thought that was maybe not in sync.
I could review over the minutes. I don't candidly know why motorcycles were exempted, perhaps because you can't have more than one person on them to be used as a conveyance to transport other people. But I was not a part of those meetings, so I do not know the reason for drafting the ordinance in the form that it was presented to the City Commission in early 2020 and requested to bring back for adoption.
So, we have two hearings, we have two hearings on this, so maybe could we check into this prior to the second hearing, and just see if, if that was a, if that was meant to be there, or if it was a misnomer, or whatever.
And see if we get to the bottom of it. What I suspect is that there are certain criteria for transport service vehicles, of which a motorcycle is not one of those, and, and, you know, for example, the upholstery, and they're talking about windshields, and they're talking about all those sorts of things, so I think that that's why it was exempted, because it really is much more in the, in those terms, much more in the...
People can ride on a motorcycle.
Well, I wouldn't Uber on a motorcycle, so I think that...
No, no.
Right, you know what I'm saying.
I was just wondering, it just didn't, it just didn't quite sink.
Right. We can certainly do that research and see what we can...
And, yeah, it depends on how much detail is reflected in the minutes of the discussion, too, of the ORC on that particular item.
And I read them all. I read all of them.
Yeah, so, I know you're very thorough, so I, if you didn't find it in the minutes, I'm not sure what more insight that we would get into that rationale. I think what the city manager pointed out is another good one, that these are, you know, it's, it seems to me that it's typically regulating the, you know, vehicles that are, that can be used for conveyance of multiple people, rather than mopeds, bicycles, and even motorcycles. While two people can fit on them, it's usually not to transport other people that they don't know. But that's, that's the best guess that I have. Again, if it's not reflected in the minutes, then, then I have no way of knowing the rationale behind the ORC and making that recommendation.
And I think that what we can do is...
I'm not sure they did specifically.
Yeah, I think that, I'm going to reach out to members of the ORC to see, because I think that they essentially picked up ordinance from another city.
Right.
That was, that was, you know, put a hole to our city. So, I will circle back in the meantime and find out if they can get the origin of that. So, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a pretty minor thing to begin with.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I just like things to be right, you know? Or you can tell me, you know, I'm wrong, and there's a real reason for it, so that's all I'm saying.
Okay. We can, we can find out.
And to answer your question about the timing, Vice Mayor, yes, we can look into that between first and second reading.
Thank you.
Just, if I may, Mayor, in terms of, Nikki alluded to staff had reviewed it, I did have George Kenny, our Director of Community Development, review the ordinance itself. As he knows, Nikki, it's a complete rewrite of what we had, and he feels that it actually adds a lot of clarity to the regulations. It requires a license agreement for these operators, it requires certain criteria within that license agreement and those types of things, so he felt that it was a, it was a good ordinance for us to adopt.
You know, the thing about it is, I'm not, you know, it is very minor, what I brought up. I mean, I think that the most important thing that the ORC was, was very concerned about is adding all these new forms of mobility, micro mobility, ferries interested, you know, the ferry is even in there somewhere, you know, Uber, Lyft, and that's the TN Transportation Network. I mean, there's been so many changes in vehicles for hire, it's not just a taxi anymore. So, I think that that was their primary, that was their primary reason for really redoing this ordinance. And so, I'm saying, what I'm asking, it's minor, but what they did was very important, because we had not given a nod to that there's a whole bunch of things that are new, golf carts, you know? I mean, that were not envisioned in the original.
Thank you. Questions?
No, no.
No. Questions?
No, really, my question was, did we have one of our staff fully look at it? Yes, you answered that, so thank you for that. You, you saw it coming, so you answered it. Thank you.
Any questions, John?
Yes, well, I do indirectly, because when I spoke with the city manager about this, I was told that this probably came, was inserted from another, from another facility, and so I basically said, well, I could talk to the city attorney if I needed to. When I went through it, it looked to me like, actually, it looked to me like we were saying we don't want anybody transported by, by a two-wheeler. And so, when I read it, I saw it as quite general, but I didn't have a problem with it, and mostly it was protection for who is in fact involved in the conveyance. And so, I, I read it in detail, because there was really nobody to ask. I did ask if, if George were going to look at it, because it fell under his department, and I was told he was, so I'm pleased to hear that, that he, that he did look at that. So, my, my question was really where it came from, but in, in the final analysis, I was fine about the explanation, so I had that question just answered, really, that George did look at it, so.
John, will you, can I ask a question on his, were you talking about, should there be some provision for the wearing of helmets, or, is that what you're talking about?
No.
No, I'm sorry, just that I...
They didn't, but I mean, that is a big safety issue, if you look at some of these forms, not, not golf carts, but...
I don't think we're allowed to, Nikki, are we allowed to dictate that? Helmet wearing?
No, I think it's a state. It was a state, I think.
Not yet. If it, that, I believe is preempted by state statutes.
Okay.
So, if it's preempted by state statutes, we, we don't need to just reflect it in our ordinance? I mean, if it's preempted, that's great, but that also means that we, that it is a rule, correct?
I don't know what the rule is.
Yes, but there's no re, there's no reason, there's no legal reason to need to state statutes in your ordinance that control.
I don't think...
The statutes are still law. If they do, I mean, I haven't looked at that particular issue, that's another one we can look at between first and second reading, but, but if it's preempted, there's no reason to reflect that preemption in your ordinance for your ordinance to be valid, or for the statute to continue to control.
But maybe it is reiterating safety, maybe in the ordinance. I understand that everything can't be in the ordinance, but, you know, I think sometimes we put things in our ordinance to reiterate something that we think everybody knows, but maybe they don't.
But then if we have to...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I brought, I brought it back again, this was, this form, this, this draft of the ordinance was actually attached to the agenda item that the City Commission asked be brought back, so I did not make any changes from that form.
Yeah. I totally understand, Nikki. You sort of came in in the middle. That was very difficult, and I give you a lot of credit.
Yeah, no, but we can, we can look into that, too, Vice Mayor, between now and second reading as well.
So, I have a little bit of an issue with the motorized scooters. I don't know the right way to handle it, so I'm just putting out what my concern is. You know, it basically, I'm assuming anybody that's offering them for use, they have to get a license agreement as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
But anyway, from a legal perspective, I'm concerned that if we say no, are we going to be accused of discriminating on, based on the kind of transportation, and is the state going to step in? Because, you know, they've tried to make it exactly like bicycles, which is what it says in here, and they're not. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, you're afraid that they'll preempt.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, like, I just went, I was just in Raleigh, they were everywhere. You were constantly stepping over them, all over the public sidewalks. It was a mess.
And Tampa.
Yeah. Now, they, right, they may not want to be here, because we may not be a big enough city for them. I'm saying, do we want them at all, and do we even want them in here?
Do we request it from us?
You know? Do we want to just say no?
Of what?
Now, that we don't want them, because they are a mess. And I'm not trying to limit our micro mobility here, but those are, those are a nuisance to a walkable community like we are.
But I thought if somebody came in and was doing a business with scooters, they would have to get our permission, and we would say no.
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
But I'm saying, why, why do we, why do we want to even go through that process? Because I'm worried, because the state kind of took away some local rights as far as what we can allow and not allow. You know, they made electric bikes...
I get you now.
Yeah, so...
Why even have it there? Actually, make it like we'd be grandfathered if they did, so to speak. Like, we don't want them.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm...
That's a valid point.
I'm just saying, and I'm, I'm not saying we have to make that decision the second, but, well, it kind of is what we're doing. I, I can't see a, I can't see a scenario where our city would want them.
I can't either.
Tell me what you saw on the sidewalk.
Okay, so the little scooters, you know, that you...
The moped thing.
Little, they're tiny little...
Drop them, and pick, other people can pick them up.
And did you see Hever things?
I didn't see those, no, but it was just the scooters. They were laying everywhere. I literally was having, these e-scooters, I had to step over them to walk down the sidewalk. And, and Raleigh's not that big of a downtown, if you will. Raleigh proper is big, but the downtown's really not that big, and they were everywhere. And it, and I was just kind of floored at how hazardly they were just laying, you know? It's not like when you do the bike share program, where they're in a stand, and you have to take it back to that stand, or you get charged, and, you know, these, you just leave them, and somebody else picks it up.
Yeah, that's not good.
And I just don't see us ever wanting that in the downtown. I don't think we're that kind of community.
I actually think places that have done it have regretted it.
Exactly.
I don't know that many are thrilled they did it, because it ends up to be litter.
It is, and I, again, I don't want to limit our options, but until somebody shows us a better model, I don't even want it as a possibility, and then get sued later if we say, no, you can't do this, we don't want it. If we know we don't want it, then let's not even allow it from the beginning. That way, they can't say, we're discriminating, we've just said from the get-go, doesn't matter who you are, we don't want them.
And Mayor, by, by clarification, you're talking about within the confines of the CRA? Because I, I think that other parts of the city are vastly different than just downtown. People might want to ride a motorized scooter.
Except that you can't just say the CRA, because what if they go on Douglas, on the other side of Scotland?
I think the issue is wherever they are, they just leave them.
Yeah.
You know, and that becomes...
They're going to be bringing them into the downtown if they're on Douglas, or if they're on the other side of Skinner. They're going to do that, so I, to me, it's, and you're right, it is different, but I just don't see where you would want them. Because if you, if you have them in the city, they're going to ride them all over the place, so they still end up in the downtown.
So, this is rental of scooters, as a micro mobility vehicle?
Yeah.
E-scooter.
Not somebody who owns a scooter.
No, you can own it, right.
Are there any scooter programs that, that mimic the bicycle share, so that they do bring them back?
And that could be something.
Or, or are all the scooters...
No, they're all, they're all the same.
They all just drop them wherever.
That's how they work. They just, you're just...
They just drop them. And I think sometimes they pay for a certain time, and, you know, they just...
They just drop them.
Or wherever they go, they just leave them.
So, it's not like if you don't bring it back, then you don't get, maybe you pay more, but if you...
They don't, you're not required to bring them back. It's not like a bike.
They're GPS, and you leave them wherever you want to.
Yeah, they can see where they are.
Yeah, they can, they can become just, they're, they're become litter. Like, they're all over the, you know, the sidewalks, and they just, they get lost.
See, I, I just hadn't seen that, but the county really controls the trail, correct?
Yes.
So, there may very well, I mean, I have seen them on the trail.
Yeah, but they're not going to...
But they could be, I mean, somebody could own them.
Yeah. It's not stopping people from using it if they own it themselves. We're talking about this...
Because it's theirs.
I'll call it ride share, for lack of a better word. I just don't think we want that in our city, so why do we have it in here at all?
I agree. I think it's a good point.
Well, I, I think it can...
Mr. Goddard, is it big enough?
It isn't.
Right. I, I've seen some...
Hell, we're just trying to widen the sidewalks now, you know, in the downtown. Can you imagine scooters laying on it?
I've seen some sort of scary misses, you know, when people are, with pedestrians.
Yeah.
And...
I just don't think we have it in here.
Older pedestrians, you know, that, you know...
In the end, it is limiting us, I know that. And normally, I like to have all of our options on the table. I just think this isn't one we're ever going to want, given who we are, and how we're laid out, and...
Surely, it's not something that we're ever going to want, the way the programs are laid out now.
Yes.
And if we want it, we can change it.
Right. And I do like the idea of kind of protecting ourselves, and so we can be grandfathered...
Yes.
Is a smart idea.
So, Mayor, I, I'm hearing consensus direction to move forward. I, I think that Nikki and I need to talk about what form that takes, whether it's a part of this ordinance, or it's, however we do it, and what happens to, and Nikki, I don't know if you want to pipe in now, or if you want to regroup with me later, but if we have to go back to first reading, because we need to mention some prohibition of motorized scooters throughout the city in the title, which means we'd have to re-advertise. So, Nikki, I don't know how you feel about that.
I don't know if we have, I, well, I'll look to Rebecca, because I wasn't sure if we advertised first or second reading on this one.
Oh, that's right, we advertised second reading, that's what we were doing.
And this one is one I pushed, I skipped a month.
Out a month.
A month, so that if...
Okay.
If there was a change, so you have the time, yay!
Yeah, so you can really look at these questions, and we're not...
I mean, I, I just, I don't want a whole dragged-out paragraph in there, I just, where it talks about, it has a whole little section of motorized scooters in there, and to me, I don't want an operator, not an operator, that's not the right word, a, a business, a vendor, yeah, I don't want that in our city.
So...
I don't know how you would deal with that, but...
Ordinances do have to be, I mean, we've got to be introduced in writing, so, so unless we're going to be saying how that section's going to reread, I would like the opportunity to work with Jennifer...
We need you to tell us how to, how to read it.
Right, right, what I would like, rather than doing that on the fly, to figure out how we change Section 8234, to change from operation of motorized scooters and other micro mobility devices to prohibiting them, I don't know that I could articulate a strike through of that section as we sit here on the dais. I would, I, I like Jennifer's idea of being able to work with her on revising that section, and bringing it back to you for first reading with that revised.
So, so let me just say, when you look at it, the first three statements in that section really only refer to a single user. It's the last two, D and E, that refers to a business. So, it almost seems like you could leave 1, 2, and 3, and strike through D and E to say, you know, no, no micro, micro, no scooter businesses are allowed, or whatever you say.[1723.47]
Well, so I would, I would like to take a more thorough look, Mayor, only because...
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to answer, I'm just...
Throughout the ordinance, yeah, throughout the ordinance, that is one section that would be impacted, but throughout the ordinance, for example, when it discusses the license agreement, the other various regulations, which, you know, seem to permit those types of micro mobility devices from being operated as a company, so long as the company has that license agreement.
Right.
There may just be other kind of threads that we need to make sure are captured.
Okay.
So if that's the direction of the commission, and you all can give that as just a consensus direction to bring it back, we can, we can do that.
Good for you, because I agree, I actually think that, you know, just in case there's something going on with that, it's a good way to be a little bit more proactive about it, because I don't see a time we'll ever want it either.
No.
Okay, we have consensus direction, we'll bring it back to you, I think it's the 14th, since this one's...
And you'll be here for that, right?
I will be here for that.
Good, good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'm, you know, there was no way for me to bring this up except two years ago.
Things have certainly changed some.
Yeah, we might want to take a look at some of those other ones, too, again, you know, you might want to just send them out, so we look at them, give you feedback.
Refresh your memory.
Yeah, I just don't want you to have to keep doing all this, because it's just extra work and extra touching.
Yeah.
But things changed a lot in the last two or three years, so...
Well, if I may, I think maybe what changed is that we've seen other cities' experiences.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's...
Very much so. Okay, so how do you want us to do, before, before I do this, I'm going to open the public comment, but how do you want us to do the motion, Nikki? Motion to approve with adjustments to the scooter language?
Yeah, and you would, you would do a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect prohibition of micro mobility scooters, and then a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading as amended, we'll need to bring back those changes for second reading.
Okay, so...
It was going to come back as a first reading, right?
Yeah, it's going to come back as a first reading.
What can we just take?
Well, that would be, that would be the easiest way, and you all can just take consensus direction to do it.
Okay, is that what you want us to do, then? So we haven't made a motion yet. All right, so let me just take public input. This is a public hearing, anybody wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so.
There's a rush.
Okay, thank you, seeing or hearing that, I'll come back to the commission. All right, so we're going to do nothing, you've got consensus direction, you feel comfortable with that, or do you want a motion that says we want you to make that change?
No, no, I think that your direction tonight has been sufficient, so long as Jennifer's good with it, too. I think it's clear direction to bring back to you on first reading those changes.
Okay, very good.
And actually, I'm thrilled with that direction, so thank you.
And you're going to look at the motorcycle, if it's in the right place.
And you're happy with that, right?
Right.
I mean, I just don't even want to, I just know that the state has preempted us on so much, so if we don't allow them from the get-go, let's not have the argument.
No, I think that's a good point, but Nikki, you are going to just see if motorcycle's in the right place, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to look into both of your two items, too, right there.
Okay, thank you so much, Nikki.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, now we're on the second reading of ordinance 22-10, calling for a general municipal election on November 8, 2022, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for Seat 2 and a commissioner for Seat 4, and to establish election guidelines. Nikki, would you please read that ordinance by title only?
Absolutely. Ordinance 22-10, an ordinance of the city of Dunedin, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on November 8, 2022, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for Seat 2 and commissioner for Seat 4. Further, said elections shall have, if necessary, city initiative petitions and/or proposed amendments to the city charter, providing guidelines in accordance with Florida statutes, the city charter, and Chapter 26, titled Elections of the City of Dunedin Code of Ordinances, and as outlined in the standard agreement with the supervisor of elections, providing authorization for the city manager and city clerk to sign the agreement, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of ordinance 22-10 on second reading by title only.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kine, or Vice Mayor Kines and Commissioner Frainey, thank you. Rebecca, anything you want to add? This is second reading, so it's just standard...
Second reading, it's standard for the election for November 8.
Okay, any questions for Rebecca? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free. Okay, seeing or hearing now, and come back to the commission, any final comments from anyone?
No.
Okay, all right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tonga.
Aye.
Commissioner Gao.
Aye.
Commissioner Frainey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kines.
Aye.
Mayor Bishowski.
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously, thank you. And then we have our proposed agenda, so you're not going to be here on the 23rd.
Right, I was going to ask for my excuse to absence, I have family...
Well, let's do that now.
Okay, so moved.
So you go.
Commissioner Kines and, or Vice Mayor Kines and Commissioner, I know, Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
My family, thank you.
Is this one of the many family weddings?
Yeah, we have four things, everybody's catching up after COVID.
You have four?
Actually, two are going to, this is one, and then there's a second one that will collide, but...
Oh, my gosh.
What are you going to do, I mean, it's family stuff, I have to do it.
Yeah, you got to do it. Again, are we done here?
We still have to do the meeting, the 23rd meeting of the 23rd, where we have the development agreement...
And Jennifer, didn't you mention adding a resolution to that? Is that the same night? So we'll need to...
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Rebecca, we need to add the resolution extending the design review, so we'll put some language in there.
Okay.
Good save.
Yeah, all right, Rebecca.
Good save.
So with those two, we've got a pretty short meeting then, just to be honest, so you're not missing a whole lot there.
Which is great.
Yeah, okay, with that adjustment to the agenda, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Frainey, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, if there's nothing else for the good of the order?
I just, because I forgot, and I really need to say this, we did receive the Florida Humanities Council grant of $10,000 for the Kellogg Digitalization Project, and I really want to thank, I mean, Phyllis and the staff at Dunedin, Sharice, Dr. Collins with USF, Sharice Ponraj, I mean, so many people worked on this, and, and, you know, Duggan's always been behind us to give us good advice from the Pinellas, the Pinellas Community Foundation, so I just wanted to say it was a wonderful win of $10,000 to go ahead and build that, our design for the project, so I just wanted to tell you all that, and to thank everybody that's worked so hard to bring that grant home.
Very nice, congratulations. Okay, all right, thank you, everybody, our meeting is adjourned.
We have cake, though, remember?
And we have cake.
Okay.
For Rebecca.
What kind now, what kind?
Vanilla, come on back.
Buzz?
No, vanilla.
Happy birthday.
Thank you for watching this City of Dunedin government meeting. If you'd like to review any part of this meeting, or watch any previous government meeting coverage, you can watch these meetings online anytime through the city's website, Stay connected with everything Dunedin. Follow the city on this channel, and on the city's Facebook page, through Twitter, and on the city's YouTube channel. Thanks again for watching this Dunedin Television production.